All rise, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We'll do a quick roll call to determine a quorum. Councillor Baumgartner is absent. Councillor Ferguson is absent. Paterness?
Here.
Ebers?
Here.
I am here. We barely have a quorum. We'll begin the meeting here by shutting down the regular meeting and opening up the public forum. Anybody who wishes to address the council may do so, but please provide your name for the permanent record. Anybody here to address the council? Looks like somebody's connecting to audio here. Anybody wish to address the council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close down the public forum, reopen the regular meeting, and move forward with approval of the agenda. Under discussion items, I will add H. We'll continue to talk about the proposed pickleball project. With that addition, I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ebers, seconded by Landon. Paterness to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Agenda's been approved. We'll move down to the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes from July 3, special work session minutes of July 10, special meeting minutes of July 14, a resolution amending Resolution 14, 2023-14, on data inventory. There's an item request for Public Works Truck Repair, a resolution amending Resolution 2366, authorizing employment of Scott Forstman, Resolution 71, annual step increase for staff, and general service agreement for an HVAC system. Anybody wish to pull any of those items out for discussion? Hearing none, all call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Paterness, seconded by Ebers, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Consent agenda carries as written.
Point of order, John.
Yes.
Our mayor. Should you be voting, so we have all three votes in for a quorum? I don't know how that works. Not up my Robert rules.
Okay. I will. We'll approve the... We'll call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Paterness, seconded by Ferguson, to approve the agenda. Any further discussion?
Seconded by Ebers.
Oh. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Agenda's been approved. Call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ebers, seconded by Paterness, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving down to discussion item. 5A Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. We have Darren Lee here from Flattery and Hood. He is our representative for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which is a wonderful lobbying organization that we leverage to speak for us at the state Capitol.
Great. Thanks for having me. I've got some materials here. Can I pass them out?
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you. All right. So again, for the record, my name's Darren Lee with Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Thank you for having me. With legislative session wrapped up, we like to come around to our member cities and just kind of give an overview on how the legislative session went and kind of what we did, what our priorities were, that kind of thing, what the outcomes were. So you have... What I just handed out is you've got our session report there that has sort of a recap of the session. It's got the outcomes there on the left, and then you'll have more legislative outcomes on here. There's an LGA handout, public safety aid handout, our labor and employee relations program, some information on that. And then you have a flyer for our summer conference that we hope you'll make it to. So... I think we have a... Do we have a... Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right. So, once again, I'm Darren Lee. And we can go to the next slide. So, just to sort of remind everyone who CGMC is, we are an organization that has 100, over 100 city members across the state that are outside of the seven county metro area. So we advocate for the interests of cities in greater Minnesota, not the metro area. So we're the only organization that does that in the state. And so you can see some of our broader issues that we work on. We're just going to touch on a few of these things today. There was so much that happened at the legislative session that we're not going to get to all this, but those are some of the broader things. And then there's some of the stuff I won't get to you. You've got that I handed out, too. So we can go to the next one. So here's a few of our top priorities that we worked on this session. We were asking for $150 million increase in local government aid, changes to the formula, and then an inflation adjustment. And then we... Bonding was another one, which includes those items there that you can see as part of that bill. Lead line inventory and replacement. We were advocating for, I think, $900 million for aid to local governments to remove lead service lines. Permanent ongoing funding for city streets. So I don't have a slide for this later, but I will mention that small city streets program is going to have ongoing dedicated funding. So that's something that Olivia would be able to qualify for. It's not a lot upfront, but it ramps up a little bit over time with the tab fee increase and then the delivery fee. So that's where that sort of dedicated new funding is coming from. And then on corridors of commerce, that we had... We advocated for a change in that language that would allow for more regional balance. Historically, some of those projects have gone to sort of the... Just ring outside the metro. And so hopefully, there'll be a more geographic balance with that program. And then a couple of others there that you can see. We can go to the next slide. So here's the big picture. This session, we had DFL priorities, CGMC priorities, other interest groups. It was kind of a cloud of dust. And then, at the end of the day, we got some pretty good outcomes for our interests. Financially mixed, maybe policy-wise was a little bit more mixed. So you might be wondering where the Republican priorities are. They didn't get a lot of attention because they were in the minority in both houses. So... And the governor was a Democrat as well, is a Democrat, Governor Walz, of course. So their priorities weren't really taken too seriously. But we can go to the next one here. So here's our budget situation. This was from the February forecast showing how much money there was to spend. It was an ridiculous amount of money, historic amount of money. And you can see the blue there is ongoing. And then the orange for each biennium was the one-time money. So $17.5 billion, going up to $22.5 in the second two years. So lots of money to use, lots of money available. Go to the next one. So with the DFL being in control of all of state government, it posed a lot of unique challenges for us. Basically, the speed and the amount of legislation that was going through committees was just breakneck speed. Like, a lot of us that have been at the Capitol for a long time have never seen anything like it. It was just so fast. And with the DFL sort of being dominated by members from the metro area, there's not a lot of outstate Democrats anymore. There wasn't really a lot of, you know, backstop, really, for some potential bad changes that were not going to be good for greater Minnesota. So we had to lean on the governor for a few things to provide just sort of a minimal backstop on some of that stuff. So that was helpful. But there wasn't a lot to really stop bad proposals. It wasn't really a good way to do that. So we can go to the next one. So local government aid. Next slide. So this is just sort of, to reset what we were asking for, $150 million, the formula change, and then an inflation adjustment, so we don't have to keep going back to the legislature every year and asking for an increase. Can we have an increase? So that would just be automatic. If you're really interested in the formula change and exactly how that formula works, it's a pretty complicated formula, but it's in that handout that I gave you. So if you're interested, you can look at it there. We'll go to the next one. So our LGA request was competing for just sort of a slice of the pie with all these other proposals that the Democrats were putting forward. The $3 billion that they allotted for a tax target in the tax bill, which is what LGA comes out of, is not a whole lot, considering there was $17.5 billion available. And that had to contend with a lot of these other priorities. Of course, you remember the Walz checks, housing aid, public safety aid, which, by the way, in your handout there, public safety aid is one of those. And Olivia's getting $102,000 of that, which is one-time money that can be used for public safety purposes. And it talks in there a little bit about what those are and what you can't use it for. So those were some of the things that we were competing against. And then, of course, child tax credits was another big priority. There was a lot of money spent on that as well. So we can go to the next one. Governor Walz, he... His proposal was originally... He had asked for, in his original budget, $30 million for an increase in LGA, which we thought, given the amount of the surplus that there was this year, was just not really a very large number. We were kind of surprised at how small it was. We put out our press release saying that we were disappointed with that. And he subsequently increased that by $10 million, from $30 to $40. So he moved up 10. We can go to the next one. Here, you can just see we had some of our member mayors testifying in committee on local government aid. There's Representative Dave Lizegard there on the left with the mayor, Larry Cuff of Virginia. He was... Representative Lizegard was our chief author in the House, and so he was a big champion of our legislation. He introduced legislation to do the full 150.
I testified that day, too.
Oh, you were there that day? Okay.
I'm a member of the MAOSC, so...
Oh, okay.
Board member.
Sure, sure.
I wasn't quite as good as Larry, though. Larry's probably what sealed the deal.
I think maybe he was. I don't know. We'll see. Well, we're going to get to that, what the final deal ended up being. So we can go to the... We'll go to that. So here's... So Lizegard's bill that you saw Mayor Cuff testifying on there was what we have on the far left. So that would have been 150, and then it goes up in the second year because of that inflation adjustment. And then the governor came in at 40 after he raised it, and the Senate came in at that amount as well. The House, in their tax bill, they didn't go with the full 150. They went... They took it down to 100. But the final outcome was pretty good. You know, all things considered, 80 million is what we ended up at for our increase. And we didn't get the inflation adjustment, but we did get the formula changes. So we can go to the next one. And then here's your city. You can see on the left is, under current law, what you would have been at, and then in 2024, what you will get. So what about 85? 85 million boost there. And that's due to the increase and then with the formula change in there. So we can go to the next one. The bonding bill is another big one that we work on, which, of course, has all that money for infrastructure in it. We can go to the next one here. So it was kind of interesting the way it went this year. The bonding bill sort of took a winding path. Of course, there wasn't one. The last one that they did was in 2020. The Republicans were able to... They had a little bit of leverage here that they could use because a bonding bill requires a 60% majority to pass. So this is the one issue where they were able to be listened to on. And so they were asking for tax relief before we would borrow any more money. That was something that they wanted. And aid for nursing homes. So in March, mid-March, the DFL put the bonding bill on the floor. It failed 34 to 33. There's 34 Democrats in the Senate, 33 Republicans. All Republicans voted against it. All Democrats voted for it. It would have required seven Republicans to vote in favor of it to get to the 60% majority. Then, so they continued to ask for more tax cuts or some tax cuts, meaningful tax cuts, they would say. They wanted the social security exemption for state income tax is what they really wanted. But then they just said meaningful tax relief. Then nothing really happened for a couple of months. You can see there's Bradley Peterson in the picture, our executive director on the left. That was the day the bill failed. So you can see he doesn't look too happy in that picture. But then, nothing really happened for a while until the last couple of weeks of session. And then the Democrats threatened to pass a $1.3 billion all cash bill, which they don't need Republican support for because if it's not borrowing, it's all cash. You just need a simple majority for that. So we can go to the next one. And here we have the all cash bill. And this would not have been good for greater Minnesota. You can see there on the right how much in the cash bill would have gone to greater Minnesota. It's just the little bit of yellow there at the top for those items. And then in the bonding bill, you can see the original bonding bill that failed, what would have been in that bill versus what was in the cash bill. Those are all the programs in there that we advocate for. PFA, PDPI among them. So certainly wouldn't have been a good deal for us. So we can go to the next one. We sent a strongly worded letter to the Senate minority, the Republicans. We sent it to Leader Johnson. And you can see we... What did we say? Futile path of extracting concessions. So I don't think they cared for that letter, but it motivated them. And in the picture there, that's our lobbyist, Eric Simonson, talking to Leader Johnson. I don't know if they're actually talking about the bonding bill, but we like to joke that that's where they got the deal done. So it ended up passing after that. We can go to the next slide. So then, along with pressure from different groups, including us, we got the largest infrastructure package in Minnesota history. And the DFL agreed to that $300 million in nursing home funding, which I think was important for getting that done. And then you can see it was the original bonding bill of 1.5 plus another $1.1 billion in cash. And the final outcome there, that's what was in the original bill, which was much better than what was in the cash bill. And then they passed all three of those bills in the final day or so. We can go to the next one. So why did it end up happening? How did it come together? Pressure from us and other stakeholders, combination of time and backlog of stuff that was built up, the threat of that cash bill, which would have been hardly any money going to the Republican districts that they represent, and then compromise. And I think it's not on there, but the nursing home aid that, from the previous slide, of course, was sort of allowed the GOP to save face there and at least say that they got something out of the deal, even though they didn't get the tax cuts that they wanted. We can go to the next one. So here's the last thing. I've got a couple on environment, and then I'll let you get to the rest of your business here. We'll go to the next one here. Lead pipes that I mentioned before. This is money that will allow for replacement of service lines, and it includes the private property part of the service line that goes all the way up to the house. You're going to have to, if you haven't started doing this already, map out where all lead service lines are in the city. That's coming from the feds, the EPA. That's going to have to be an inventory and map done by 2024. And there's money available right now from the Department of Health to start doing that. And then $240 million won't be enough to remove all lead lines in the state, but it'll be a pretty good chunk. And so that's money that'll be available that will have to be prioritized based on the Department of Health eligibility and priority list. So we can go to the next one. And then, of course, water infrastructure is so important and so expensive. That's a big issue for our members, as you know. So there's the money in the bonding agreement. And then there was also, for those different water infrastructure project programs, point source grants, and then WIF is another one, big one. And then there was a little bit of money in the legacy bill as well. So we can go to the next one. And another big thing on the environment issue is sort of we had to play defense. So there's all the things that we got, but with a lot of bad proposals for greater Minnesota coming from the members from the metro area that sort of might make sense for their districts in sort of, you know, historically disadvantaged communities where pollution has sort of taken a toll. But it would have hampered economic growth in greater Minnesota. So we had to fight to sort of limit the scope of those proposals so that they wouldn't bog down the permitting process and then also would not change public facilities authority language to move that money out of greater Minnesota and into the metro area. So there's our lobbyist, Elizabeth, testifying on that as well. There's probably going to be more of that that we're going to have to fight against next year. So we're going to have to sort of defeat some of those bad ideas where we can, as much as we can. Next one. Looking ahead, we can go to the next one. So 2024 legislative session. There's going to be... That's a policy year, usually. There's going to be fix-it items from all the unintended consequences of moving so much legislation so fast. They're going to have to do some cleaning up on that. There could be some constitutional amendments, maybe equal rights amendment, something on abortion, maybe. And then we've got the election going on. So the session starts February 12th. So also could be some supplemental spending, depending on how the forecast comes back. And then I think I have one here on the next slide on some of our events. Love to have you come to Thief River Falls. It's a little bit of a drive. But what I've covered here is just sort of like a tiny bit of what we're going to cover there. There's going to be a lot more information. And then our fall conference, of course, in Wilmer. And then we got our Legislative Action Day next year. And then, do I have another one here? Questions? That's all I have. So if anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for Darren? Darren, I know, you know, we take a look at what happens in St. Paul, and we understand that there are a lot of investments from people getting moved around to try and get things done. We're just really happy that we have an advocate on our side to speak for us down there. And we just really appreciate your partnership.
Yeah. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Next up on the agenda, we have Joe from the Utility Department discussing our Minnesota Municipal Power Association approval of extension.
So basically, what MMPA is looking for is a motion on whether we're going to sign or whether we're not going to sign. So...
Is this the one we talked about last meeting? It's like signing for 2040 and later?
Correct. So... And the PUC recommended to not sign at this time.
This isn't a permanent thing. We can still... We can still re-up our partnership with MMPA if it's decided that that's the direction we want to go. But us tabling the item two weeks ago was not enough that did not satisfy their, I don't know, their standards or their requirements or whatever. So we need to officially reject the extension of the contract.
At this time.
At this time, yep.
And then also put in there that we utilize this time to research other members.
All right. We have to reject it? We can't just let it die on the floor and not do anything with it?
This will allow them to continue planning without us.
Oh, yeah. But I don't want to... If we don't have this, I don't know why we'd reject an offer offhand.
So we...
Like, we can leave them on hook for a while?
We've left them on the hook. They wanted an answer by March 30th. So we've left them on the hook a long time.
This doesn't mean... This doesn't mean that we are permanently ending our relationship with MMPA. Right. This is... It's more of a "not now" than a "no."
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we do not sign the extension for Minnesota Municipal Power Association agreement.
And also use the time to...
And while using the time to explore other utility options.
Perfect. I'll second. Motion's been made by Ebers and seconded by Paterness to not move forward with the extension from the MMPA and utilize the time to further analyze the proposed agreement with MMPA and other service providers. Does that work? Any further discussion?
Darren, you look like you have something to say.
No, I think I have your sentiment.
What was that?
I share your sentiment, I think, but I don't think it's...
I don't understand why we have to say we're turning it down when, if I remember correctly, there isn't even a deadline to sign it. It's like...
It's just something they want, I think.
It's something they want, cool. Well, they can figure it out, I guess, in my opinion. Like, I don't get why we have to reject it, like, and take official action on it. We can let it die, and that is action by itself. Like, inaction is action in this case, while not turning it down and having the option to sign whatever we have at some future point, unless they're going to revise their offer to us, which is their prerogative. But they've made an offer, and we can kind of hold on to it until they say it's no longer good anymore. I'm not a lawyer, but that's normally how offer and acceptance works and stuff. So I don't get why we're moving forward with this.
Do we need all three of us to vote for it to pass, or just two, three?
Well, two out of three makes majority here. It's just...
I guess... I was... I'm just proposing to get it off the damn agenda because I'm sick of hearing about it, honestly. Because...
That's fine. I get it. But like, I get the sentiment, like...
I get it, too. I understand. I think it's ridiculous that we're even conceding to their demands.
So from my point of... My point of view, just let it sit there, and it can hang out on the bottom of our business items for the next year, for all I care, until the PUC has something as a recommendation. Like, either yes, move forward with it, no, we're going to move forward with, what is it, Missouri, whatever the other one is they talk about.
There's a few different options. There's a few different options.
So, so consider that in order for us to also shop around these other, these other outfits, you know, it might be beneficial for them to know that we've rejected our, our extension as well.
I fail to see how that would possibly help our bargaining position in any way to get rid of a potential option.
Well, like when Missouri River came just to speak to the PUC, they got permission, or not get permission, but they acknowledged to MMPA that they were coming here. So they're trying to do things on the up and up and they don't wanna ruin their relationship with them either, so.
They can play nice with each other all we want. We don't have to make their life easier. Like, we don't have to possibly tie a hand behind our back to help them. I, I don't get it. I don't know why we would have to do it. I mean, they can, if they want to, they can pull our, they can pull their offer to us.
I don't know how long the offer was open or if it had a deadline. It's like you said, it's basic contract negotiation. I don't think there's.
It seems like you're very invested in this, so I think.
Not at all. I.
Would you accept an appointment to the PUC? Because I would gladly resign if you'll take my spot then.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, we'll, well, we'll do that more formally at a different time, but.
We should do it before the next meeting because there's, this is gonna cause another meeting.
Yes. And I've already gotten an email from MMPA this morning and first thing tomorrow morning I will have an email asking what the council decided.
Okay, so what is the recommendation from the PUC?
To formally reject.
At this time.
Did they give any reason for that besides for the fact we wanna preserve a relationship with MN, whatever, MMPA?
I think, I would say the main reason is, is because they want the city, or we wanna be able to generate some of our own electricity. And with like MRES, we'd be able to do, I believe it's 5%, but with MMPA, we can't do any.
Right, but we haven't, like, I get the reasons for wanting to step away from MN, MMPA. I don't get, I don't understand the reasoning for rejecting the offer we have in hand without a better option in front of us. Because we haven't even, from my understanding, from what Matt has said, who has probably dug a lot more into this than I ever have, they are just beginning the talks with these other organizations.
Correct.
So why are we throwing away an offer that is in front of us that we don't have to sign and accept right now without having a better one in our hands? Is it just to be nice to MMPA?
I'm, I can't speak for what Terry from MRES said, but he, the way he said it is, I don't think he will, because it's a process to see if they will even accept us.
Okay.
And my opinion is I don't think he will without having support and being able to tell.
Support from who?
From.
The council.
Yeah. Because they wanna be, because they'll, like, he, he didn't even wanna come here and talk to us until he'd let MMPA know that he was coming here. So I think he will be, he'll wanna say like MMPA needs to know that you guys are now searching for other options before he comes.
A competitor of MMPA will not talk to us until we formally reject MMPA.
I think it shows, it might show him that we're, we're serious about looking.
Even if we reject the, or not reject the MMPA extension, we do nothing with it. We're still with MMPA till what?
2040.
Right, but.
What's the difference if we say we're not gonna accept the next century now?
Because what if we want to in two months from now and it's still open to us, whereas they could change, they can change the terms at any time until we accept, but. I, I just don't get it. Like, we're already under contract on them for the next 15 years, no matter what. And I get they wanna do their capital planning and everything. Cool, well, make assumptions. That's what you have to do. Exactly. So why? I just don't understand why we would have to formally reject the contract. Like, I don't get it. And I've, I haven't heard any great reason besides, well, MAPPA wants you to.
MMPA does too.
MMPA, what, or MMPA, they want us to. Well, if they want, if they've seen our inaction and wanna pull the offer and we can make it later after we've done our homework, cool. I just don't get it.
It could take almost a year to see if we are even eligible with somebody else, too.
So are you saying?
It's quite a process.
Is it the opinion of whoever's on the Utility Commission that we should do this so that we can be taken more seriously by other competitors?
I think, I think the main reason is because MMPA wants, wants to, so the, look at it from the MMPA side of things. They want to, they wanna start planning for the future, right? There's all kinds of upgrades that they're gonna have to be making to their grid and they wanna know whether or not they're gonna have our financing, our, our income to depend on in order to do that. So they're asking that question now.
I understand that.
You said you didn't understand.
No, I understand, I understand why MMPA wants us to say yes or no. But I don't see what the benefit to us is saying no is right now and it's, might be a yes in a year from now. Like, it might make their life slightly easier, but they still have to make assumptions because I'm guessing they would still like us to be part of their power association. So even if we came back in a year from now and said yes, okay. So they just tried to make, they're trying to make informed decisions with estimating things. Well, we don't know if we're in or we're out yet. We've been with them for how many, I don't even know how long we've been with MMPA, forever. What's the answer to that? I, it doesn't matter. We've been with them for a long time, right? We're going to be with them for 15 more years. We don't know if our no is actually a no. If we say no today, we don't know if that's an actual no or a, well, no for now, I guess. So why are we saying no? If it's not even a good answer, we don't know if we're actually giving them the correct answer. So why give them an answer at all? Like.
So what should I tell them?
Uncertainty any way we look at it.
Here's a question, I guess. Perhaps, perhaps we can phrase it this way. At this time, are you interested in approving an extension of our contract to 2050?
No, but I don't wanna, I also don't want to shut the door on that. Like, will I want to in six months from now or a year from now?
Maybe.
I don't know. PUC will make a recommendation hopefully and I guess I'm going to be on it possibly to help do that. So why would you reject something that we, that we don't know if we wanna reject it if they haven't given us a deadline? If they've given us a deadline, then okay, we got.
So if you're not interested in approving it right now, should we rather call for a motion to approve the extension rather than rejecting it?
Well, if you want it.
Feel, feel a little more, is that a little closer to accuracy for you?
That's what's on our agenda is are we going to approve an extension?
At this point, do you feel comfortable in approving an extension?
I'm gonna vote no for approving it because the PUC is said to vote no on approving it.
Okay.
But I've seen no reason, like, why would you take action to say no? That's not what boards normally do in something like this. We could be offered a contract every day by someone. You don't say no to every single one of them in board action. It's just, it's assumed no unless you say yes. That's how contract stuff works, is it's a no unless otherwise.
Got a motion on the table to reject the approval of the extension. Seconded. Any further discussion? Well, this is a motion to reject the extension.
At this time.
And also I use the time to look for other alternatives. So all those in favor of rejecting the extension signify by saying aye. Aye. I'll oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion does not carry. Thank you, Joe.
Sorry for making it complicated. I just.
No, I.
I don't get it. Like, I don't get why we would do that. Seems backwards to me.
Yeah, I understand. It's like there's three options. Accept, reject, or table. I mean, wait. So I guess you're in the.
Just wait and see.
Wait and see option.
Okay.
That, that's, that's literally what we're doing because we're shopping around. We're waiting and seeing in my mind. I mean, we're past that.
Okay. On to discussion item C, the update on the small wireless facility colocation agreement.
And we had already got the, the agreement itself was approved last time, but so we, the tech committee met, no, the PUC committee met and we got the, the dollar amounts, the fee schedule for it. So we went with $175 of annual rent, which is $150 of, for the rent and 25 for the maintenance. And then for the, the smaller wattage, it was $10 a month for electricity and 120 for the larger.
Okay, any conversation about this?
So I, I didn't see an attachment for this with our agenda. I don't know if I missed that somehow, but my, I just had the agenda. Is there anything? It's just the prices.
Just the prices. The agreement has already been done.
We filled in the prices as council directed.
Okay.
Last time.
Yep.
Motion to approve the updated small wireless facilities colocation agreement.
Motion's been made by Patternist, seconded by Ebers to approve the updated small wireless facility colocation agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Hey, one out of two isn't bad.
Just to note that that will go in that policy, but it'll also be added to the annual fee policy so that when staff is looking at that, it just makes it easier to.
Fast reference.
Okay.
Wonderful. Jake? We have some good forward momentum going here, so it's a perfect time for you to.
Yeah, so the Tech and Sustainability Committee has reconvened. I mean, they've had a couple positive meetings and we want to invite the company out to hook up a meter to our water treatment plant for a power conditioning system that should pay for itself in about five years. And it lasts for 25 years, so it's a, if we're eligible, it should be a pretty, pretty good investment for us.
Let's see, estimated investment for the, the research portion of this. Is there nothing?
Not, not, not until they come out and do the test. Basically, right now we're asking for permission of them to come out and hook up the dent meter, which measures the electric to see if we're eligible for it.
Oh.
If we're a bad fit, they don't wanna do it because we're not gonna see the return.
Okay.
So basically, they wanna come out, hook their meter up, figure out, because basically the electricity has like the primary portion and also a carrier portion that gets to the building. What this does is it, it captures that bad energy and, and conditions it and then repurposes it back in and also provides a high level of surge protection so we can get rid of the old surge protection at the water treatment plant also. So I figure it sounds like a pretty decent deal to just have them come out and take a look.
Yeah, so this is a no investment type deal at this point.
Right now it's no, though they're gonna give us a quote after they come do their investigation.
Perfect.
Is the motion required for this?
Consensus is fine.
Again, I mean, we're not buying anything, so.
Good to be, yeah. Fantastic. I'll spread the good news.
That was a tough one, huh?
Except Jake, let us know if there is some type of general agreement to, to come and install that.
Yeah. Nothing's being installed. They just basically hook it up and let it run for half an hour. So there's gonna be no, no equipment on premises and Matt will fill you in. He just couldn't be here tonight, so he wanted me to come in and.
He's out of it.
Answer questions, so. Awesome, Jake. Appreciate it very much.
Okay. We also have the second reading of ordinance 2023-04 amending code section 32.20D regarding the smart team. It has been read. Okay.
And this was just changes requested by Chief C, who's in, I've received no comments. I don't know.
No.
City Hall has received any, so we'd be ready for approval.
Make a motion to approve amendment 2023-04 amending code section 32.2D smart team.
Do we, do we just approve the second reading or do we approve the amendment?
It'd be moving approval of the ordinance 2023-04. Second.
Motion's been made on moving on the ordinance 2023-04, amending code section 32.20D. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 I'll oppose, same sign. Ordinance carries. All right, 802 Walnut Avenue East hazardous property conversations. Versus.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, I can talk about this. So initially, we had the complaint, I think it was about a month ago that it kinda came up related to another issue, but the, I would say, so it looks like Marissa put together a summary. It's in the packet, page 57 of the PDF. And this, seven different violations and the three that I see as probably the most serious, public safety related, would be the swimming pool that hasn't, it's open, hasn't been fenced in, it's filled with water and bad water and other debris. That's number one. Should have a fence around it if it's not, especially if it's not drained. The second thing would be, be, I don't know what kind of tanks they are in the driveway that have an opening.
Fuel oil, I think.
Potentially fuel oil, but then some information now said maybe they're cistern, but we don't know.
They're in a cistern.
Okay.
The fuel tanks are in a cistern, because I'm buying a house from a couple that looked at that, that were interested in buying it. They had it inspected.
Ah, okay. So you know more about it than I do. Anyway, so it's open.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be, so that should be fenced or covered. And then the third thing would be the buildings that have open windows, doors. There are a number of other things on the property that I would say are nuisance items, not necessarily public safety items. So the three that I mentioned could be addressed through the chapter 463, the hazardous building process. So the same process that we have in place or in the works on 611 East Lincoln, that statute also has a section where we can remedy open buildings or hazardous excavations, which would be what the cistern tanks and pools would be. So we can, we can take action to correct those items and the other stuff, if we wished to address them, we still could, but that, that would be a separate process. So my thought on this was we wanted to bring it to the council, see if council wants us to start that 463 process. There will be some costs involved. Marissa and Craig, I think, did a estimate of what it would cost to remedy some of those things, which is also in the packet. So you have, it looks like material, labor and materials estimates for those items in there. And then, of course, there would be some of my time and then the court fee, filing fee for getting an order to do that. So tonight, we're looking forward this direction. Do you want us to start on the process? We'd have to do a write-up, a written resolution, propose findings in order like we did for the Lincoln property and bring it back. So just looking for the direction for now.
Have we sent stuff to the owner? Like correspondence going, hey, hazardous property, clean it out.
Can you answer that?
I do not know if she has sent a letter or not.
Well, that place has been vacant for how long?
I know that.
I just, well, I just wanna know, because have we sent letters since that's been vacant?
I have no idea.
Because that would be before Marissa's time even, so.
This is the first.
Do you remember sending anything?
I don't know if there was any contact.
I don't remember if I did.
I think this is the first time was to actually talking about the hazardous part of this property.
Since we've been here, this is the first time.
Did we, do you know if we assessed, because last year we had to address nuisance items, the lawn and I think some trees, something, it was out of hand last year as well and I think we had to do some work in there. But after that, I'm not, I haven't personally, I haven't reached out to the owner at all.
Uh, maybe a nice friendly letter before we move forward with all this. Isn't that part of our process?
It's not required under 463. The, you certainly could. We did that with the Lincoln property. It's not required under four sixty-three. The, you certainly could. We did that with the Lincoln property. It didn't yield anything.
I'm doubting this well either, but.
It just ended up.
Well, we should probably be.
Like.
It just took up, it took up more time. You know, usually I don't on the four sixty-three, just because mostly the time they're not responsive and you waste six weeks by the time you get a letter put together and.
It's probably not going to be news to anybody that's hazardous.
Marissa said she has not sent anything since she's been here and she wasn't, she wasn't then struck the two meters, so that's her response.
My opinion is on the public safety ones, we shouldn't waste time. We should just move on them. Then maybe the nuisance ones, you know, we would do a letter anyway.
Yeah, I mean, just play with the dog at the park there. So I mean, I'm aware of what the property looks like right now from the backside and everything, but we'll call it for the neighborly sake of this, I feel like we should at least start with a letter. Probably don't give the whole six weeks, because like you said, I doubt anything will happen. But if we get a response of some sort, maybe go after that, but I, yeah, it's probably time to just start moving on this at the same time, like that, I don't even know if it's actually water in the pool by now, or if it's just a sludge at this point with how long it's been there, so.
There is.
That was the, uh, mason jar we saw.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
It's a drowning hazard either way.
Yeah. So.
Would you like Marissa to start with a, like a, for instance, a thirty-day letter? Out to him about the, um, first, the public safety issues and then noting the nuisances. And then if she would come back to you with, um, kind of a, a step process. You know, just as you said, first be dealt with the public safety issue items and then nuisance items.
So it can be done simultaneously or concurrently. The, the one thing I'd remind you is if we do a resolution, findings in order to clean up, you're giving them another time period to address it. Doesn't mean we go to court immediately. So the resolution we passed on the Lincoln one, for example, so you gave them a thirty-day letter, which turned out to be, you know, just with the timing of things more than that. And then we had to do another, that resolution order gives them another thirty days.
So even if we do the resolution, they have thirty days to start working on stuff?
Or what time period you determine is reasonable. So it could be, yeah, it could be another thirty days.
So that would, that would kind of serve as.
Yeah, that would, that would serve what we need to, so I guess.
So, so if you're saying, yeah, let's take care of this, then I'll work with Marissa. We'll get a proposed resolution put together for the next meeting, so. Already, we're looking at two weeks from now before we start moving.
See, I, I think we can move forward.
Yeah, but you definitely need to do something, so.
All right, let's.
So one thing I'd like to address on this is we had a very lively discussion about whether we like look at the stuff upon complaint or if city, if city employees can generate the complaint to look at these buildings. I feel like it shouldn't have, we shouldn't have had to wait for the council to take action to move on something like this. We literally, like, to write a letter, for instance, if that's the informal step on something like this. Because I feel like we've empowered our employees to do what needs to be done, and I mean, again, that property is, um, it's unknown sore spot, we'll call it, like, it's not hiding, it's giant. So I feel like it shouldn't have been, uh, hey, wait for the council to do something about this before writing a letter, for instance.
I understand what you're saying, and I think.
And maybe the.
At least for the nuisance items.
For the, yeah. In the, again, the public safety stuff, like the fact that there's an open pool and everything, I totally get like, yeah, let's move forward on something like that. But in the future, I feel like we've empowered our staff to do what they need to do, and they don't have to wait for us to tell them, hey, they literally have an oak tree growing up the side of their building. Maybe we should send a letter.
I think they've been sending, she's been sending letters to.
Okay, but it's just kind of a.
Does do all nuisance issues go before the council?
No.
Okay, all right.
It's had some, uh, uniqueness to it where a complaint came from the neighbor. The neighbor was also trying to work something out.
Yeah, that.
And then that, that issue got taken care of, and now we're back to.
Right.
The complaint.
But so I guess my, my point to this is, again, we empowered staff to move forward with these type of things. Um, we put in process, I think we asked for a form to be made up so that this can, this stuff can then be addressed. It can be filled out by either the public or by staff. It doesn't have to wait. Again, and I understand this is because of the hazardous part is why we're moving on it now, but I don't like to hear, well, I was waiting for the board to do something before I sent a letter out.
We'll note the councilman's comments. All right, do you feel like you have enough direction?
I have direction on the, yep, on the, I'll be, three hazardous ones is my focus and Marissa's, of course, the nuisance area.
Thank you. Okay, item G, late addition to the agenda. Uh, City Hall Public Safety Building Project. We, uh, you're a little closer to the situation than I am.
I have, um, I've reached out to USDA and to the city attorney, um, as to how to proceed with, um, potentially hiring and putting in place, uh, the design, build, construction management that you talked about and that you held interviews for last week.
But you approved that on Friday.
We did, no, we did. When I reached out to USDA, I said, how do we go ahead with this? And they sent me, um, they sent me a proposal. And they need submitted. This, you should have this in front of you. Um, it's, it's a request to USDA to approve, um, your, your, um, your request to move forward with a design, build, construction manager. So we have to have that approved by USDA in order to move forward.
Have you, have you talked to Marcus about this?
Yes.
And they agree that this needs to be done?
Yes.
Okay, because my understanding is they were not going to go with the design, build type philosophy. They were going to farm out the architecture and the construction possibly, and they were just going to be the managers of it. And maybe I misunderstood this when we had our work session. I thought that was the way that, uh, TWC was going to go down, was the design, build, and Marcus was going to go down the route we have. But instead of having an architect run the seal, it was going to be a construction management firm run the seal.
When I reached out to USDA in, in order for you to move forward with that, this is the proposal that we need, this, there's a checklist here of items that have to go in with our request to go with the construction management.
Okay.
Okay? And when I read through the list, there are things we couldn't do. We, um, they're asking for a proposed scope of work describing in clear, concise terms, um, the technical requirements of the contract. They need to know, um, a statement of the specific work to be performed by the contractor and on and on. Things that I, I said to, um, John when I called him, it's almost like a chicken versus the egg.
Okay.
So, um, in order to put this information together, we needed, we need their help to, to go ahead and put all of this together along with this proposal request to USDA for them to approve it.
So.
Basically, I think what the ask is, is if we're willing to hire, um, Marcus to initiate this process.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Couldn't do it without them.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just, like I, I saw the words design, build, and I, I got a little, I went, ooh. I thought that we were, they were going to go like, they're not designed.
I'm sorry, it says design, build or construction management. So we're going for the construction management.
Okay.
Forward. It's just we needed to, so we need to enter contracts with them to help us gather all of this checklist.
Fill out the paperwork to give to them to say, hey, we're going to have Marcus come help us with this.
Yes. So.
Okay.
There is that, and that's what Doug from USDA sent us. And then, um, there are three parts of the contract that I had, uh, Aaron Walton read today. And one of them says it's the agreement between the owner, city, and the construction manager. Next, it is, um, okay. What's wrong with me here? And the, yeah, general conditions of the contract for our construction and insurance and bonds. So it's a three-part contract, and it's very familiar to me because this, um, is one, um, that we signed in twenty with, uh, our previous architect. So these are the USDA forms, is basically what I'm saying, that, um, that Marcus is telling us have to be, um, agreed upon or signed and executed before they can start this work for us.
Thank you for getting all these things lined up for us. I know that's a, a lot of.
So this is from Doug. If the city wants to use a construction manager for the project, USDA RD will need to review and approve the request for the RD funding. And then they sent me that seven-page checklist. If the construction manager method is approved, then the new plans and specifications will be reviewed and approved prior to the bidding project. So this was just one more step. We, we weren't, didn't know what was forthcoming. When I, um, talked with Jim Bach today several times, um, he, he is.
From Marcus.
He is, um, they are working on another USDA funding, very familiar with this process.
Good. The only comment I had or suggestion would be under the standard form of agreement. They had, um, paragraph twelve point two, selected arbitration is the only, uh, dispute resolution means, and I would rather it be both. Keep the options open. Hopefully, we never have a dispute, but, uh, I prefer not to limit it to that form.
Is that part of that checklist you're referring to?
No, that's, that's in the main agreement. That's all. Otherwise, just look all.
Standards.
Standard, yeah, yeah, they are. American Institute of Architects, so they're just basically filling in the names and a few different options to select.
Aaron, what was that one again? I know I've gotten an email, but.
It's twelve point two under the, on the standard form of agreement. He had, he had indicated just, um, arbitration is the only dispute resolution means, and I'd rather have it be both, so we have our options open. I think that's a usual league recommendation to.
So it'd be, have two checkboxes instead of one?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
If, yeah, that.
Oh, I see what you're doing. Got it.
Okay.
Otherwise, yeah, just abstaining.
So consensus of the council is to have the staff to move forward with, um, with the paperwork for the approval for the construction management form. Uh, do we need, do we need a, uh, res, um, a motion for the AIA documents?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you can move all three, and if you want to make that one minor change.
So I would, I would make the motion to approve all three of these agreements with the amendment as from what is presented to check the box for litigation in a court of competent jurisdiction under section twelve point two. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Motion's been made by Paternas, seconded by Ebers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mary Jo.
Um, and just next, um, only right now checking for your, the council's, uh, potential availability for next Monday night. We're just reaching for, um, schedules, or what, what do you have available next week? Uh, they said one and a half to two hours is what they would like to spend with you. And they will be bringing down a team, he said.
Marcus.
Marcus.
Yeah, I'm wide open. I'm open.
We'll get as many people here as we can. I think I am too, but.
The five-thirty-ish time?
Sounds great.
Okay, that's what I will get back to him about.
Man, they must not know me well if they want to spend two hours with me in the same room.
I will reach out to Jim and be more specific if, uh, other than the council, if there's anyone he wants to be part of that initial meeting. I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have, uh, recently added a conversation piece here. It's about, uh, the pickleball court. We should probably get the full council here before we make any decisions on, on the future here, but, uh, it looks like they have obviously, um, obtained some engineer sketches here, uh, showing the general location and, uh, potential construction of this uh, potential park amenity. I bet you would like, uh, commitment from us right now, but I don't know if that's appropriate without the full council here.
Just two things that I saw. Um, I noticed they're, um, going to be requesting a sidewalk to it um, from the shelter.
Yeah, and that goes down a hill.
Is that, uh, is that, is that part of their, their plan? Is that part of our plan?
Uh, their plan, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I noticed that too. And they want to tie into the drain tile. Let's also require digging if they want to collect dirt work.
But that got brought up in, in park, didn't it, Mayor? We really talked about the, um,
In order.
Drainage around the court and then how it should drain to that, um, existing.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's a way to, um, make, you know, ensure that, that the investment is protected. Just to, to make it as dry as possible, because it is rather swampy in that park. So I just do want to throw it out there. I know there's been conversation about, uh, future upkeep. It's pretty rare, although in the last couple of months, it's not been so rare, but it's, it's, uh, it is a little refreshing to see some community groups making investments in our parks. And I just want, uh, I want the council to consider the opportunity to have this, you know, investment added to our park system here. It was, I don't remember if this was brought up in meeting or not, but, uh, it sounded like uh, the investment for upkeep would be something around fifteen thousand dollars every three to five years. So, you know, three to five thousand dollars a year of, of, uh, of budgeting to keep this uh, amenity going. But, uh, do, do also want you to consider that, you know, we have, we have a lot of amenities in town that we have to upkeep. And, uh, it's, it's a good opportunity, I guess, to, to, to add to the, the park system. It's a good opportunity, I guess, to 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 add to the the park system, the minimal upfront. Um, investment from the city.
Did they ever consider using the existing tennis courts that we have and just converting them to dual use?
Yeah, that's uh, that's also an option, I know they, they want to uh. They want to explore this opportunity as well, uh, they've got their eye on Sunrise Park. I think I. It that it's, uh, it'll be nice to take, add to that park, definitely. Um. But yeah, it's definitely been a conversation to to just retrofit the, the existing um. Tennis courts.
Looks also probably need to be resurfaced with that mat, if I remember correctly.
As long as, I guess I'm not sure about the, I can't speak to that.
My biggest thing would be even with the upkeep, the parks, we have a budget of like, I can't remember correctly, like eighteen thousand dollars?
That's like the discretionary spending from, from the park board, that's like, things that the park board can do to add to the parks, the. The general um, budget for the parks is much larger than that, but.
Bet they'd love to have discretion over that five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, absolutely, they would, or they, you know, perhaps, perhaps this would, I guess I should. If that, if that's, if that's kind of, kind of the deal killer on your, your side of things, definitely has the park board if they'd be willing to. To make that adjustment to their, their discretionary spending.
So again, I know I've said this possibly too many times in open meeting, I'd really like to see a presentation of how they'd plan to actually pay for this. And keep it in good working order for the foreseeable future.
It's not the same direction we gave to the baseball group?
Nope, no, it was not, because they are asking to basically move one baseball field that we already. Probably don't maintain well enough to where the rest of the baseball fields are, and we would be maintaining the exact same number of baseball fields. That would not be anything additional.
It's not gonna, we're not gonna have any additional investment in that complex over there?
We already need to upkeep Penton Park, and and from someone who's played on that field for many, many years, it needs some love.
What about the proposed Crowsnest update and proposed?
I have no idea what that is. What's a Crowsnest update, like?
Crowsnest is a, is an elevated position to view multiple baseball games at once.
I've never heard, I've actually never heard that brought to us.
That wasn't part of the presentation?
Uh, I think. They, they were looking, they were looking for a blessing to start exploring stuff. And starting to raise funds, they weren't looking for anything from us except for, hey, if we can raise the money, can we do this?
It's, we're, we're, they're, they're looking to raise the money for, for the pickleball courts.
And then they will be looking for them to be upkeped forever, and which will add to what the city needs to do. Whereas moving a baseball field from one park to another park means you still have four baseball fields.
Correct.
And will require no more upkeep, cuz four minus one plus one is still four. So, again, I, I don't see this as something that the city could get involved in unless. We have plenty of other priorities for the next bazillion years that we need to fund, other than.
On the park side of things?
On the everything side of things, parks don't exist in a vacuum, they exist within the current city budget.
What if this was included in the park budget?
It's still not a great idea to take on more liabilities for the city. I may, we, last time I checked, we do have a city hall project to need to pay for, five thousand dollars a year over the next.
Expecting to use a park budget for that?
Oh, but I'm expecting to use five thousand dollars for it. Per year for the next forty years, apparently.
So for the next forty years, what are you willing to invest in to make, to to bring amenities to the city?
I don't know what this is an amenity we need in the city.
I, I think there's, there's a lot of, a lot of public ask for this.
I have yet to hear a single person outside the people bringing this proposal ask that, and I've yet to hear a great reason why we can't use the tennis courts for that. It's literally inside of a thing with the net, we've talked about.
It's like saying you can have swimming lessons at the pond.
No, no, it's not.
It's the.
Oh, by the way, we have to pay for upkeeping a pool too, which is also, I'm not gonna say it's a parks budget, but it's definitely a city amenity that. We would be, not only the city, the area would be very unhappy to lose. And that's gonna cost a lot of money coming up here, cuz we've been underinvesting in that for a long time. So I'm not in favor of saying, of saying yes to something free that we know is going to cost us a lot of money in the future.
Okay.
It's called a white elephant gift.
Alright, any other discussion about pickleball court? Alright, we'll move down to committee reports, did anybody attend the Corn Capital Days meeting today?
I did. Um, basically, it was just kind of re, um, go over everything, um. The volunteers are kind of on your own to get volunteers, the tickets, just under three hundred have been sold, so there's a big push to sell tickets. Um, what else?
I think that was the biggest thing was the raffle.
The raffle.
Kind of behind on that. Uh, the, the parade got canceled, that.
Oh, the kitty parade is canceled because we don't have anybody to volunteer and run it, so if people complain, then I'm not gonna stop and volunteer.
That's right. Thank you guys for attending and and reporting on it. Alright, parks and trails. Alright, uh, you see the, the minutes here, I'll go over them briefly, Jerpy was able to cut down some of the hills at. Kubash Park to make it smoother, uh, while they were there during the construction project. Um. Trail phase two, the design needs to be finished and sent for approval on April first, and uh. SEH is taking care of that. She gave a brief update on the Dupuy Avenue project and the safe routes to school. There was some upkeep done at Memorial Park Shelter Roof. Uh, they gave an update on, on some meetings that were had with the pickleball group. At that point, it was cited that the pool wasn't gonna be opening till fall. SEH is looking for grants for the phase three of the trail. And the park board asked Craig to price out some asphalt and concrete for the basketball court at Hinton Park. Who you texting?
I'm not, I'm trying to get myself off the Zoom meeting right now.
Alright, PUC met on July twelfth. Uh, talked about the. Small cell wireless facility co-location agreement, and also. The MMPA agreement, that was about that, we've heard all about that already, any other reports from staff? And, okay.
Um, let's see, maybe I'm under. I'll be under notices.
Okay, any other reports from council?
There's a pool's report in our packet, I didn't see it until I got here today, so. You know what I know.
Alright, looks like, uh, yeah, I think it was about the same report that she gave at the, at the park board. So we're looking at fall to be swimming again, and notifications and communication?
I have one for the council. Um. This is my, my last meeting, uh, Mayor and councilors, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to fill in as the interim city administrator since February first. I've enjoyed working alongside my many dedicated employees of this organization. Uh, again, I started February first, per my agreement, I was not to exceed six months. Uh, therefore, my last day will be July twenty eighth, and that's not to risk another penalty from PERA for myself. Um, as noted in the finance director job description, Sean Hanson will take over in the absence of the city administrator. Until Elizabeth um, Torlson arrives on August twenty first. Please note, I will remain available to Sean, Deputy Clerk Jasmine Miller, and other employees, should they have questions.
Mary Jo, it's uh, we, we, we totally appreciate you coming in, you came in during a incredibly tumultuous time. And uh, the, the, the work you did to, to aid the council, and also aid the, the office. Uh, has been priceless, and and we just really appreciate. Uh, we really appreciate you volunteering in such a, such a. Bumpy portion of our history here in Olivia. Um. I guess we do have to formally accept her resignation, is that a?
My retirement.
Your retirement?
Well, what number is this?
You know, I, I do want you to know that Jasmine knows this, coming back. I've continued to um, keep in communication Sean, Suzie Lang. And Jasmine about number of issues, so they're already working with various issues. And we'll be taking all of that going forward, so um, there won't be anything that shouldn't be unturned. So, I, I sent my first email to Elizabeth today. And um, expressed how city employees are anxious to meet her. And um, mentioned that Sean and Jasmine would be able to fill in. And the, and the department heads, um, in all the respective departments um, outside. Um, then I asked her um, to let us know when she would be comfortable or ready to accept our emails, correspondence. And et cetera going forward, so I just sent that out today. Um, and I'm sure she'll respond in, in some manner so that um, we can start passing along this information to her. Okay?
Sounds great.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Still isn't enough.
Still not enough, no. Go spend time with your grandbabies.
Yeah.
You know.
Go with grandma.
Continue um, on this, on this city hall project, I've just kept Sean and Jasmine involved in all of that. Um, so they'll, they'll keep, keep, uh, keep it going, going forward, and if there are any questions. Um, as they know from my past, I'm, I make myself available and, and they can reach out to me. So, if I can help in any way. Alright.
Any other business that come before the good of the council? Hearing none, I'll call for a mo- oh, I'm sorry, under notices and communications, I also wanna add. That uh, we're gonna be discussing a potential stop sign, uh, we need to get a little more information. Uh, regarding it, but we can look for that on our next meeting, post, stop sign addition, alright.
Excuse me, has any of that been run by the police department?
Not yet, we're still in the conversation mode of that.
Okay, cuz I remember there was a policy from past.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that uh, that kind of outlines that.
Perfect, we'll follow that policy.
That their recommendation to you kind of helps move that process along.
Very good. Alright, any other business that come before the good of council, hearing none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn was made by Paternas, seconded by Ebers, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign, alright, we are adjourned, thank you.